Okay, good evening. The Board has been in closed session since 6 o'clock for two items. The Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance, or Dismissal of Specific Employees of the Public Body. And number two, Approval of June 20th, 2017 Closed Session Minutes. Could we rise for the pledge?
.........................................................
Next item on the agenda is Public Comments. Are there any public comments tonight? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to Approval of Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any recommended changes to June 20th, 2017 minutes? Okay, hearing none. Those minutes will stand as presented. We have one report tonight. Draft Operational Plan 2017-18.
Tonight, we're going to talk about our draft operational plan. And we'll go through some of the big ideas tonight. And an abstract of some of those concepts are included in the board packet. We do consider this a draft at this point, and we'll explain a little bit about that as we go through the presentation. So these are our objectives here. Board will deepen its understanding of the foundational concepts of future-ready learning, deepen its understanding of beliefs and practices necessary to ensure that all students graduate college, career, and life-ready, understand the immediate student achievement practices -- or, excuse me, priorities to accelerate learning for all students, and be able to communicate the big ideas of the district vision and operational plan to the community. Tonight's presentation is organized essentially in three portions. The first, first we'll share with you the vision, beliefs, and practices necessary to be a national leader in future-ready learning, and ensure that all students graduate college, career, and life-ready. Secondly, we will provide an overview of the big ideas reflected in the draft operational plan, and share with you some current examples of this, of how this is reflected in the daily work of the district. And finally, we'll go into greater detail on the student achievement objectives, and some of the new information and more immediate priorities. The plan is a culmination of Phase One of the Focus 205 process, and reflects input from the community engagement sessions, focus groups, thought exchange survey, educational alignment study, and facilitating team report. The details and action steps in the plan are designed to support a vision of all students graduating from high school, college, career, and life-ready. Now, we're working on this visual representation here, and it may evolve, but it was our first attempt to try to represent some of these major concepts into a visual. So I'm going to explain a little bit of what this is intended to convey. So the vision of all students college, career, and life-ready. What we're saying is that to achieve this outcome, graduates must be proficient in the six Cs of critical thinking, creativity, communication, collaboration, character, and citizenship. We increased from four Cs to six Cs to accommodate the life skills of character and citizenship. The introductory statement reflects the core values of future-ready learning and innovation, the mission of accelerating learning for all students, and a commitment to partnering with the community. We moved away from the phrase raising the bar and closing the achievement gap for all students to accelerating learning for all students to avoid using language that connotes a deficit model. We took the name acceleration period from this statement. The district's four belief statements ensure commitment to accelerating learning for all students, and the three pillars of culture, student experiences, and instructional practices are the how-tos. In Elmhurst, we believe our greatest resource is our people. So when we consider the Elmhurst experience, we want it to be about people, and when we think of maximizing resources, we want it to be about ensuring a high-quality teacher in every classroom cultivating leadership and developing the human, social, and professional capital of the organization and the community. We also recognize the need to monitor and verify that our programs and processes are producing the desired results. The administration intends to begin a regular cycle of program review. I will briefly address the concept of academic return on investment later. Other examples listed here include the district's key performance indicators, and its newly established practice of instructional rounds. We have a proud history here in Elmhurst, and people comprise this story. The success and impact of York graduates have had on the world is significant. On this slide, I highlighted a sampling of York Dukes of Distinction with accomplishments in a wide variety of fields, from the arts and athletics to NASA, an ambassador, pioneers in the healthcare field, including people who served at the Center for Disease Control, the Mayo Clinic, and of course, a token academic is on the list. Also, we are continuing our focus on students, and we want to show you how we're currently trying to reflect some of these big ideas in our current practices. And so we're going to start by showing the identity video that we showed with you, showed to you probably in August at the beginning of this school year.
Welcome to Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205. A place where teaching is bold, and students are highly engaged in their learning.
Every student and every staff member has a story.
Decisions are made based on what is best for students.
Future-ready classrooms are growing and evolving daily.
Those classrooms modeled for four Cs, with the future-play super skills of communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity.
The educational needs of all students are met, challenging each to his or her full potential, and ensuring a foundation for future success in life.
All means all. Rigor, relevance, and relationships form the basis of excellence. Excellence is embedded in culture. Growth is a mindset. Diversity is embraced and celebrated. Opportunities for unique expression abound.
History provides inspiration.
Family and community are at the core.
We are committed to raising the bar to create bright futures for our children, of hope and
encouraging them to reach beyond their dreams.
Okay, so we're going to share a few more stories with you next. We're going to welcome York Principal Erin DeLuca and English Department Chair Kevin Podeska to share with you their vision for interdisciplinary forums at the high school. And then when they're finished with their portion, Fisher Principal Jane Bailey, District Instructional Coach Katie Murphy, and Teacher Jamie Gableman will highlight successes at Fisher's STEM-based summer school program.
Thank you, Dr. Moyer and the Board for having us this evening. We're excited to talk about the capacity that interdisciplinary forums hold in the high school. A lot of what we've worked on this year is really meeting the needs of all individual students in the high school. And we've done that in a variety of ways to support the rigor and relevancy framework by making our pathways engaging, by creating real-life experiences on the high school level. But what we really are trying to make sure we don't do is leave the core behind. So the core is obviously as important in terms of really getting students to think creatively and to pursue research. So these are some of the things that we're going to talk about in terms of the why. There's... Oh, there we go. Or, maybe not. I don't know. There's a presentation that... There's a separate presentation that is with this. But I can always just keep... Okay. Oh, thanks. And we're on the next slide. So, there we go. There we go. So, the why of creating opportunities for students to engage interdisciplinary fashion with science, social science, and English is to really enhance critical thinking. And we do that by creating learning experiences that have a broader curriculum that can unite the two, all of these content areas together. It really helps students synthesize their thinking and creates a real learning community across the school. It develops students' skills capacity through literacy, writing, and argumentation skills across content areas, research skills across content areas. And the same goes for math, numeracy, and logical and computational skills. And so, we're looking to infuse these things through really exciting content and experiences for kids. And Kevin is very experienced in some of these things, both within his past and what he's brought to York this year as the English Department Chair. So he's going to give some specific examples in just a few seconds. It also develops students' personal and economic efficacy. It gives them a purpose beyond just, you know, the reading and writing and the natural things that we assume are going on in the core, and gives them a reason to start questioning in a real positive and informative way. Kevin?
You know, we're throwing around the term forum quite a bit, and I know that that can refer to a lot of different things. I mean, we're in a forum setting right now, really. And you may have heard about, you know, other schools working with what you might call a forum, the New Trier example from last year. You may have heard about that with a public forum. We're not really talking about that kind of setting. What we're really talking about is an instructional strategy that we can use to bring what kids learn from multiple content areas, that's not just in the core, that's core and non-core, together and craft an experience that allows them to explore the ideas that they're learning in those different areas in a safe, low-stakes setting. Right? So the outward substance of our forums, these activities that we call forums, is content. But the driving force behind it is really elevating students' critical thinking in a way that we can't necessarily replicate daily in the classroom. Right? So, I think it's best illustrated by looking at some examples of what these look like. I have two to share with you. You can see them on the screen, and then I'll show you some pictures so that you can literally see what it looks like. So, real quick, one of them is what we call the Justice, Liberty, and Social Forces Forum. Okay? You'll see a little who, what, when, where, and why kind of thing there. Who did this include? It includes sophomore students. We say sophomore students because it's not sophomore students in their English class or sophomore students in their social studies class. It's sophomore students who learn a lot of things in a lot of different areas across the day. So we wanted to bring them together to give them a chance to explore some of what they were learning in different areas of the day. So the topic of the forum was examining the convergence of social and cultural influences on individuals and groups' liberties. So the key idea was freedom and liberty. And then looking at the implications of those influences. We did this in the spring of this year. And the reason we wanted to focus on that was to give students a chance to synthesize and apply content from English 10, their social studies class, and their science class, to real and relevant issues. And then to evaluate the implications of those issues in a safe and low-stakes way. The point was to give them an opportunity to weigh multiple ideas without being pushed in one direction or another as to which idea is more valuable or less valuable, but to give them a way of putting them side by side and exploring them. We did another one that was focused on a very different topic. It was Aaron's Law, which as you know is a state law which requires public schools to do some kind of activity dealing with sexual abuse awareness. So rather than have the speaker come in and sort of just lecture the kids, we decided to engage them in a more sort of exploratory setting that brought together what they learned in social studies, in English, and in PE health. This was also in the spring of last school year. And it's very similar in its purpose, is to ask kids to synthesize and apply content from these different areas of the day to the public health crisis of sexual abuse, and then to evaluate its relationship to personal and civic responsibilities. All right? That fulfills the purpose of the law, but it also gives kids a richer critical thinking experience that raises the relevance of the issue. Okay? Let me show you some examples. This is a picture from the Justice, Liberty, and Social Forces Forum. You can see there's about 60 kids in the room, maybe a little bit more than that, so it's about three classes in the room. And what the kids are doing here are exploring a series of exhibits dealing with different issues related to what they were learning in these multiple content areas. So instead of one of these exhibits becoming a 50-minute lesson in one classroom, you now have kids of all different levels. We're not talking about just like your basic, you know, like sophomore English. We're talking about kids of all levels coming together to engage in a conversation about a variety of issues in the same place at the same time. So they're learning about issues and topics relevant to the community as a community. It's modeling the civic process that underpins everything that Erin had started with. Here's another image, a little bit more up close. It's so much nicer with the lights off, but what can we do, right? So this is what it looks like here. These are some of the exhibits that you can see set up there. So there you go. These are some of the examples here. And what we would like to do next year... Can I merge into this?
Yeah, absolutely.
I shouldn't be standing near the microphone, shouldn't I be? I'm sorry about that. What we intend to do next year is develop a forum each quarter at each grade level for implementation in the 2017-18 and 18-19 school years. We want to craft these experiences in order to ensure that kids have that consistent experience of this kind over time. All right? So the content for those are things we're going to develop in concert with our PLCs, with other department chairs, and with IAC. But that is our goal. We did two this year. Our goal is to have four for each grade level.
And, you know, finally, in closing, what... Going back to the why, I think that providing this coherency for students, this interconnectedness is really part of our moral imperative for what we're doing for them day-to-day. And I know, I know for a fact, because going through it this year at York and in my past, it changes literally the conversation at the dinner table. Margaret sits on York Advisory Team, and this year, some of the students that came through that social justice forum talked about how they're so excited to talk about what they learned in class in these types of experiences with their parents. And a couple of the parents on the York Advisory Team echoed the exact same thing. That's remarkably powerful and exciting to be able to really engage kids this way and not have them be an observer of their experience, but be a creator of their own learning. The approach ties every content area into innovative learning and engaging opportunities, all of the, all the things that Dr. Moyer talked about, and what ties into the two student objectives, what ties into our two building goals at York. So I believe that it's going to breathe quite a lot of power into the vibrancy of the feeling in the classroom over time. And that is it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Jim?
I have two questions. First, operationally, you're going to have four of these per grade level per year. How much prep work goes into this? How long does the forum last? Is it one class period, or does it go on for multiple class periods?
It can depend on the planning, but this past year, we did it in one class period, rotating the students all periods, bringing them in as they had English in first period, second period, third period, into a common learning environment. Kevin, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, there's not much else to add. The only other part of your question, I guess we didn't speak to, is the planning involved in that. And these are, these are not, you know, they're not such huge undertakings that they would require lots of extra resources in terms of staff. It's something that can be done through normal PLC processes, which is exactly what was done to produce these two you see here.
So, I mean, so there's not a lot of prep work on the, put on the students, they...
Oh, you're speaking to students? Okay. I thought you were speaking to staff.
Go ahead.
Okay. So students, no more than they would have for any other classroom activity. Again, these are, this is an instructional strategy. It's not necessarily, you know, a production in that sense, so.
I have not witnessed this personally, but my understanding is, as an example, Hershey High School does a more extensive thematic curriculum where they bring in math and science into the thematic realm as well. I mean, any plans to expand it and move it to something like that?
So, the idea would be to tie the, tie all the content areas together. But interestingly, you have the person that was at the inception of all of this at Hershey was Kevin. So Kevin's experience is vast in terms of how to really connect those department chairs. Our IAC is extremely strong. The department chairs are chomping at the bit right now to find ways to connect their disciplines for students. And this is an approach that makes, you know, a lot of sense, is intuitive, but not overburdening either the teachers or the students in terms of the delivery of content or the productivity from the student's perspective.
And just my last comment. I think it's a great idea. I think that will certainly increase students' engagement and certainly their thought processes. So thank you for putting the effort into this.
Excellent. Thank you.
You answered a lot of the questions that I had, but just so that everyone knows, IAC first...
Oh, it's our instructional advisory committee. So it's comprised of department chairs, supervisors, and the assistant principals.
And to clarify, the prep for the employees that you're answering, Kevin, the PLCs are your, that, that work that's done in the professional learning communities is with your staff, which is the late starts on Wednesdays, right?
It is. And so, you know, the professional learning community model, and I've talked about this in pockets, but it stays pure to the analysis of student work and growth in order to revise instruction and curriculum to make it more relevant, engaging, but also to meet the needs of students. So this ties nicely into that.
So as you are working on that, that day, you said that the students, when they came into their English classes and you worked it throughout the day, instead of that, that day that students getting just English, they do this interdisciplinary, critical thinking, kind of, you know, applying, you know, research and...
Right. And the two forums that you saw, the first one was really connecting English and social science, and then that second one, Aaron's Law, was really breathing life into PE, English, and science.
Thank you.
Well, I, I have to say, I was so excited to see and hear about these. I think this is absolutely fabulous. Fabulous because it, it models, one of the things we talk about, critical thinking. So it's trying to get the students to practice critical thinking right there. It is a different way to, different application of information. So instead of sitting in a lecture hall, they're getting all the information, but they're getting in a different format, which helps people who learn different. So some people may not learn as well through the lecture hall. So I think this is absolutely fabulous, and I can't wait to hear more about it in the upcoming years.
Thank you, Margaret.
How does this expand and connect between these four days each year? I mean, how is it integrated to everything that they learn?
Yeah, and, you know, Erin had mentioned in the introduction to this that these forums are part and parcel of a larger instructional program, right? So we're talking about course content that is sequenced very purposefully over time so that there is sort of like a thematic connection from one, between one unit and another, right? So the larger structure fits together as a whole cloth. These forums are experiences that are housed within that whole cloth, right? So they're never treated as like a standalone theatrical production, right? They are very purposefully housed within this, you know, larger network of content, skills, and critical thinking, which is exactly what we wanted to accomplish with these two, and that's exactly what we intend to accomplish with the four we intend to develop at each grade level.
I'm really curious how this is going to grow and what it's going to turn into, and how it will further integrate into the whole learning experience and the themes that you're addressing. So, very, very good thing. Thank you very much for sharing with us, and looking forward to what it looks like in the future.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So we'll have Jane.
And team.
Good evening, and thanks for having us. We have just finished the most amazing summer school I have ever seen. And so usually I like to bring children. I brought you virtual children. So, by way of building background to what we did, we're going to show the video, and then we'll talk about kind of how this came to be, and voices from the classroom. We have practitioners here that actually taught these, the projects. So, here we go. You have to read a little bit. So, that's kind of a sneak peek. And why did we do this? Dr. Moyer made the mistake last year of taking me to Model Schools Conference where they talked about future-focused learning, and that's kind of all I needed to get started. So, we, as a part of CDT, the fourth graders read a book about toys, the invention of toys over time. And what a great idea, the kids could make toys, of course. And I think it was like last winter, I brought a toy and a couple of kids to you. And that was the first project, and from there, we've made human bodies. First grade took all of the magnet things out of the science bin and let the kids loose, exploring magnetism in the maker space. There's been a project for everybody, at least one, and we decided that, wow, summer school, we could try something really radically different and do multi-age groupings, and let kids have choice of their topics, and see what happens. So, 122 kids, 11 teachers and staff, and it was pretty amazing. There is no question that these kids learned because we activated their curiosity. They needed answers. They wanted to know, well, how do you build a storm shelter? I don't know. They had to go find out, and then they had to test their theories. So, it was pretty engaging. I'm going to let the teachers talk about what they did.
Well, actually, Katie and I work together, so we both taught kids coming into first grade and second grade, and so half the morning they learned about outer space, and the other half of the morning they learned how to be architects, so, and builders, so.
So, something that we did, we brought, we read the story Rain School, and it was incorporated in how kids in Africa came to school, and they had to build their own school, and the kids had to participate in building the school, using, finding all the materials they needed to build the school. And then, we had a guest speaker come in, Max, and he built schools in Africa, and he was able to talk, show the students how there's really students in Africa that are building the schools. And he brought in pictures and videos and things, and so the entire first and second grade got to see that and do that. And then they built their own schools using pretzels and different materials that we had, just because they were supposed to be building architects on their own.
And we learned about space. We built international space stations and spaceships, and we learned how craters form on the moon. That was the thing where they had black paper with shading paint, and they had wiffle walls, and they had to make the craters on the moon, so they had a really good time. And they learned a lot, and they really learned a lot.
And it was fun to give them materials and have them do it, rather than us tell them how to do it. So, it was, you know, we gave them, if we were building a skyscraper, we would just give them all the materials, and they had to figure out what to, how to build the foundation, what was going to hold it up, and then if it fell, it was okay, then they had to retry it again. So, it was really exciting to see the kids learn like that.
So, a lot of it was obviously learning by doing, accepting mistakes. You know, you look at their faces, and they are all totally engaged in whatever they're doing. They're very serious about their work. Ms. Corforio came over one day and got to help us build skyscrapers out of straws and spaghetti and marshmallows, I think. But it was amazing, so that was the Fisher Summer School.
So, it was really fun to go, and I'm not an architect for obvious reasons. Just, I think what was interesting is working with the kids, just, and they didn't even realize they're really learning. They think they're just having fun. But some of them, what they built was absolutely amazing, and they knew why it was working. And it was incredible, and it was really just fun, and it was super hot outside, and you're thinking, are they really having fun because it's school in the summer? But it was great. So, you know, my compliments to you because it takes a lot of work to plan fun, but really educational experiences for kids, but, so thank you.
Well, we had the architect come in, and I have to say that I have never, I did not see a blueprint in my life until I was an adult. We've got six and seven-year-olds pointing out things on blueprints and actually reading a blueprint. That's pretty amazing. Don't know if it's real useful right now, but it may lead to something.
Karen?
I just love the exposure. I mean, whether it's directly related to them or not, you never know. It's the exposure of facing the fear, if you've got a fear of collaboration, you know, the three, the six Cs that we're talking about. You actually put it to life so that it's not just words, it's just living it. So, it's living the loving of learning.
Exactly.
So, thank you.
Can you contrast this to last year's summer school or previous year's summer school, and what would you do different next year?
Well, I think Tito told you that it was more better this year, and it probably was more better this year. You know, I think that it is summer, and there, what we're really trying to do, let's get serious about what we're doing in summer school, is we're really trying to maintain their skills. We're not looking for large gains in achievement, but maintain what they have. And so, how best to engage kids in seeking answers? You know, going to find a book, look online. The space station, they started out with these big boxes of Legos, and they were going to build a space station. Okay. Then they went and looked at the schematic, and then they started to try to kind of replicate pieces that they saw. That's all productive learning. And one of the things I think we learned, one of the math practices, I think it's seven, don't look it up and call me on that, but it's about engaging in productive struggle. Too often, we take the struggle out of learning. We rescue them. There's an answer, I'm going to lead you to the answer, when in fact, we didn't lead them at all. We kind of gave it to them. And so, that's taking away their learning. There was no way that we could take away the struggle here. I don't know why the thing isn't standing up. What are you going to do about that? And they made it stand up. The little boy who talked about, no, he was the same one, but he talked about why skyscrapers are not made out of bricks, and then you saw his structure. Unbelievable what that kid did, and he's just going to sit back and cheer like, hmm. But he knows what he did was right. It was based on what he learned about the triangle shape in architecture. He's seven.
He's seven.
Yep.
There's one line from that video that I wrote down because I think it's probably the most important thing we can teach any kid in elementary school, and that was to believe in yourself. So, thank you.
Not a problem. It was a blast.
It was. Okay.
So, I'd like to thank our presenters. You see, Erin's ditching out on us. She's got some childcare things, and Kevin, I don't know, he probably wants to watch Clayton Kershaw pitch, and Jane doesn't technically work in July, and so, you know, although she never takes off, you know? And Katie sees me every morning at the exercise place, so the fact that she's actually willing to spend any time with me at all after those experiences is amazing in and of itself, too. So, and Jamie heard that we were doing this and said, you know, she really wanted to be a part of this, and that, you know, I just think we should acknowledge her dedication to what we're trying to do here, and I appreciate them contributing tonight. So, when we get to the future, this is where it gets a little tricky because we really don't know. It's difficult to predict. These are just a few examples that I threw on this slide, and we really don't know what jobs are going to be out there. We just know that the ones that are out there are in an increasingly rapid place technology is replacing. And Moore's Law has held since 1965, and that's basically the rate of technology advancement doubles every two years. And so, when you think of what that means for different industries and the types of skills that kids will need and what that means for society, it's just, it's going to be a very, very different place. And so, what does that mean for public schools and specifically Elmhurst moving forward? So, that's why we talk a lot about these six Cs. We don't, the need to teach content specifically is not what it's all about anymore, and that doesn't mean that there is no role for content. It just has to be viewed through a different lens. And so, with the speed of change and the factors related to technology, graduates are going to need to be able to process complex information, need to be able to retrain for an ever-changing job market, collaborate people with people from all different cultures, shift from content and school for school's sake to skills and interdisciplinary learning. We don't need students to be good at school. We need them to be successful when they leave school. As Harvard's Tony Wagner says, "It's no longer what you know, it's what you can do with what you know." The administration plans to share information on these important concepts with the board and the community over time, but as a brief introduction, I've included some key concepts on these six areas based on the work of Partnership for 21st Century Skills and Michael Follin and Joanne Quinn. Now, there's a lot of information on that slide. It is in the board documents, and I'm not going to read all those bullets. But if you were to look at those, you'll see that a lot of those concepts are interrelated. But if we do connect them to the district belief statements, we can easily work them into our curriculum, our assessment, and our classroom practices. So, and those concepts are things that you heard our presenters talk about. Grit is on there. You talk about, you know, creative thinking, you talk about collaboration, and a lot of the things you saw and heard them speak to and experiences that we're trying to create for our students, those are the types of ideas that are up there on that slide. So, these four basic belief statements are a product of the 2016 Administrator Retreat when we asked our senior leadership team to follow the following question related to the moral imperative of closing the bar and raising the achievement gap for all students. And it was simply, this statement sounds good, but what does it mean? And so, these four belief statements were a synthesis of the various different work that our people did, processing through that question, and we think it's a very good synopsis of some basic core beliefs of how we should structure our work in order to ensure the ultimate outcome of college, career, and life-ready graduates. All students must learn and grow, all students. Shared responsibility for student growth, they're our students, not my students. We make decisions based on what's best for students. Again, the focus on what's being learned from what's being taught, the whole student-centered type of culture and student engagement and all of those different kinds of things you hear us talk about all the time, and a future-focused community of learners. And so, we're going to talk a little bit about innovation in a minute, and we're going to get into these concepts, as I said, a little more deeply over time. And then we got into, as we were constructing an approach to support the vision, really three primary pillars, culture, student experiences, and instructional practices. We came up with three components of culture, relationships, innovation, and professional learning communities. You've heard us talk quite a bit about professional learning communities. I do want to talk a little bit about innovation, not a lot, but this is a district management group's definition of innovation, and this is what we're going to adopt as an administrative team and share with our faculty. When it comes to terms like innovation or rigor, people often have disparate ideas about what that means. And so, we always try to establish a common organizational definition and understanding for these types of things. And we're going to define innovation as this here, achievement of pattern-breaking performance that can be scaled and sustained. And in a little bit, I'll explain you how we want to approach that concept. Student experiences, when you look at this, you'll see under student experiences that if you look at our York Dukes of Distinction, you saw a lot of, a variety, a kind of a comprehensive eclectic mix of various different talents and achievements, and we want that reflected in our student experiences. We, you know, when the high school people talked about interdisciplinary forums and when the elementary people talked about the summer school, it's lighting the fire of the passion that the students bring with them every day. And, you know, there's a term that's out there now a lot, we talk about is the idea of killing creativity. What we do in school so often to put out that fire as opposed to keep it alive. And so, the student experiences, we do want to be comprehensive and broad-based, and so you see obviously an inclusion of fine arts, extracurricular activities among the various different kinds of other specific ideas up there like career pathways, STEM, personalized learning, et cetera. And then with instructional practices, you've heard about a lot of these things over time. I'm going to touch briefly on two of them. And the first is rigor. And so, we've shown you this visual of the International Center for Leadership in Education's rigor and relevance framework to help operationalize this concept. The framework, the highest level of rigor occurs in quadrant D, and just simply boiling it down, all that means is a combination of higher-order thinking and real-world application, that the types of things that we try to show in the interdisciplinary forums or the summer school approach. And then, to support the idea of innovation, we're going to combine the ideas of best practices and next practices. And so, best practices are basically continuous improvement, but what they really do is they build a better 20th century school. So, while you want to continue to refine what you're doing well, you also need to innovate so that you can get faster change. And next practices make it possible for you to do something you've never done before. And so, the way we want to approach this is try to do both simultaneously, which is take our people who are innovators, typically about 3.5% of your employee group, you would classify as innovators, and let them go, and let them do their thing, let them do what Jane did. And then, when it becomes, when we find out what works, we scale it so that it becomes the new norm. And then, we continually improve the new norm, and the innovators continue to innovate, and we keep pushing the envelope forward a little bit in a way that's manageable for the organization. So, this draft plan that we have is going to include multiple opportunities for continued community engagement. That includes, and all the kindergarten study, that includes multiple variety of different opportunities for continued input, such as some polling, the thought exchange survey, some focus groups. We are bringing Bill Daggett in. He is the founder and CEO of International Center for Leadership in Education to speak with our faculty in the afternoon as a keynote address. Then he's going to talk with some principals and teachers in representing every building in the district in a smaller kind of way to debrief some of those big ideas. And then, he's going to come and talk with the community at York that night at 7:00 and present in the evening as well. And then, we are going to try to take the various different ideas that we learned through the input and the feedback and try to very carefully communicate that to the public over time in ways that they can digest and understand what we're trying to accomplish. So, that's just kind of a framework for what we're looking at between now and December. And so, now we're just going to talk a little bit about the actual draft plan itself. The plan's designed to support the moral imperative. It's based on research, and it includes three interrelated concepts in which sustainability considerations and facilities support the district's student achievement priorities. considerations and facilities support the district's student achievement priorities. So, these are the various different components that are broken down in the student achievement section. And these are the five areas that emerged as instructional priorities throughout the Focus 205 process. And we're going to talk about two of them tonight, Project Lead the Way and Dual Language, because those two are the ones that the plan would suggest we'd like to look toward implementation year one in 2018. So we want to get the school year 2018-19, so we want to get that conversation started tonight, actually. And then, these are our two student achievement objectives. So at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Mark and Mary, and they will walk us through the student achievement objectives for the year 2017-18.
Good evening. First time talking at this, I got to get used to it. Student achievement objective number one is to develop, continue to refine and polish our formative and summative assessments, common assessments across the district. While our map tests and even park testing give us a broad sense of how students are performing, they don't necessarily give us an indication of what students can and cannot do. They're not specific to standards. That's where our common formative and summative assessments come in. They allow us to measure our students' progress according to standards and according to the learning targets that we've set for those students. Beginning with the standards, learning targets are developed, high-quality assessments are then created, and we want to then communicate those results not only to the student as a motivating factor, this is how you performed, let's try and do a little bit better, but also that informs our own practice so then we can go ahead and improve our students' achievement by going back and reteaching interventions if necessary. We will continue to develop assessments, for example, in the areas of mathematics, our Eureka Math in grades K through 8. We've had quite a bit of work done in K through 5 literacy, and we'll be continuing throughout the district working on those. I mentioned learning targets. Using learning targets are essential. Last year, that was a focus of the instruction rounds carried out by the principals. They assess the learning target use at the beginning and end of the year. And then, they also work to assess their quality. Were the learning targets clear to students? Were they in language that the students could understand? The percentage of classrooms in which learning targets were at least visible at the beginning of the year was good, but it still increased 16% over the course of the year. Now, we're going to continue to work on learning targets this year just to improve the way they're written and the relationship between targets and assessment. Last year, we were a little inconsistent there, but by the end of the year, we saw a quadrupling in the percentage of teachers that had assessments directly tied to their learning targets. We're going to show a brief video here from our Hawthorne School where Nikki talked to some first graders and a couple of older students regarding their experience with learning targets in their classroom.
All right, my students, are you ready? Okay, so I want to talk about learning targets today. Karen, can you start and talk to me just a little bit about learning targets? What are they, and what do you think about them?
Learning targets are like a goal for the day or week and like what you want to get to and like learn about in that like hour, day, or week or something like that.
Wonderful. Do they help you when you're learning, or do you think they're kind of like thumbs down?
Well, I like them because then they can like remind me about like what I'm learning about if I forget about that, and I like it, and I like about that.
Okay, thank you. What do you think?
Well, if I'm like in the classroom, then they're there. And if I'm not in the classroom, then when I don't know what we're doing in class, I can just look everywhere and check.
And where are they? How do you know where to look in the classroom?
Because I'm on a kind of like, behind a ramp, kind of like a ramp holder.
If Ms. Biori's sneaky, does she move around a lot, or do you always know where to find them?
Always, always.
Perfect. What do you think, John?
They're really helpful because they help you keep yourself on track.
All right, we're back again, and now this time, we're going to talk about learning targets. Talk to me about them. What do you know about them, and what do you think about them?
Well, I think they really help us like understand what's like we're trying to like learn and accomplish during that like period of time because you change it almost each day. So it helps us like stay on track with everything that we do and stuff.
For the record, the term, I believe, is an educational term of art. It's
It's an acronym for it.
PLCs are going to be very helpful with this, you know, getting teachers together to go through the, go through data. Go through the data from these form of and sum of assessments helps us to personalize instruction, to see where it is their kids are falling short or our expectation in terms of progress with the standards. The formalization of acceleration time this year, our K through 5 buildings will be focused on literacy with a couple piling a little bit of math time, but our acceleration time will be focused on literacy, and we'll be measuring student improvement in that area. And then Hawthorne and Field will be piling standards-based grading this year, again going back to, you know, learning targets tied to the standards. Now, we're going to then be able to measure student progress, not just an A in math, but an A on a particular standard based on the learning targets that they've experienced along the way.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about our second student achievement objective, which is increasing student engagement in all grades, EC through 12. And I want to talk first about what we mean by student engagement, because oftentimes when we speak of engagement, we think about students who are completing their work, who are sitting in their desk, eyes on the teacher, paying attention. And those students may be engaged, but there's a very good chance that they're not engaged. So when we look at what it means to actually be engaged in learning, we turn to the Danielson Framework, which is our teacher evaluation tool. And one of the components there, three C, really speaks to student engagement, and it refers to it as the degree to which teachers ask students to do work that is sufficiently rigorous to promote deep learning. So for a student who is performing above grade level, just sitting and paying attention may not be rigorous at all. It may in fact be very boring because it's not challenging for them. In order to help our teachers better understand that difference between maybe focused and paying attention and deep learner engagement, we depend on our instructional coaches who do whole-group staff development. They work with teachers one-on-one in order to better understand and apply that. The other bullet points on this slide really look at ways in which we intellectually engage our students. So, we're moving into year two of our ELA adoption, and the instructional approach that we use with that curriculum is what has a positive impact on student engagement. So our teachers engage in a workshop model where students are selecting much of their own text that they're reading. So it's driven not just by the level at which they're reading, but also by their interests. Teachers through a workshop model are able to much more easily personalize the instruction, have individual conversations with students about their reading and what skills they need to next develop. We are also moving into Eureka Math, and Eureka Math is really challenging our students to think about math more flexibly. So rather than memorizing an algorithm and finding a single correct answer, it challenges students to look at problems in different ways and find multiple ways of solving problems. They're working together in collaborative groups trying to address what we would call messy problems, problems that have different types of entry points to try and break it down and come to a solution. We have our students writing about their math solving. So for students where math has come quite easily to them, it really forces them to slow down and think about why they know something and not just rattle off a correct answer. We're moving into year three of our mobile learning initiative, and we will have one-to-one Chromebooks at grades 3 through 12. And this really enhances the opportunities for our teachers to personalize learning and to really bring experiences into the hands of kids that they may not have had before. As Jane talked about, all the different avenues that the students had for learning this summer, one of those was a farm-to-table unit. And when Mark and I were visiting last week, the kids were setting up to have a Skype conversation with a chicken farmer. And for many of our students who've lived in urban or suburban areas all of their life, that was a new experience for them, and they were getting to understand and build some background knowledge that they normally would not have had, and that technology has made that possible for them. Let's see. An integrated service delivery model speaks to ways in which we include our special education students in rigorous grade-level instruction. Using our instructional coaches that have more expertise in special ed, doing some co-teaching, and then also professional learning for our Gen Ed teachers ensures that we are going to have high expectations for all students, including those who have some special learning needs. Increasing our STEM opportunities in the district has been a focus of much discussion this year. If you think back to our thought exchange survey, that really came out as one of the highest areas of interest for our community. This year, through the generosity of the foundation, all of our elementary schools have received funding for maker spaces. And so, we've supported our school librarians at the elementary level in learning how to incorporate those materials into meaningful learning experiences for our kids. Project Lead the Way, which we will be bringing to the middle school, and interdisciplinary learning expands on what can begin in the elementary school at the middle school level. And then, finally, the work they're doing at York with the interdisciplinary forums, with the career pathways that you've heard Erin speak about, really take that learning from elementary and middle school further so that when our students graduate from York, they really are college, career, and life-ready. Some of the strategies that our teachers use to engage their students are called Kagan Cooperative Strategies. And if you'll recall, it might have been August of last year where some of our building principals engaged the board in some of the Kagan Strategies. The power of that is that it draws all voices into the conversation, but what's important to remember is it has to be combined with effective questioning and instructional strategies, because you want to make sure that you are promoting very rigorous questioning and not just a surface-level discussion. And so, we've continued that, and in August, we'll have a report from some principals who have further developed their learning and expertise in Kagan. And then, finally, our curriculum development team for science has started this summer, and their work primarily right now is learning. The next-generation science standards really will require us to shift the way in which we teach students and design our science courses. So this will put us not just in a position to have best practices, but as Dr. Moyer talked about, next practices, the learning that that curriculum development team is engaged in will put us in that position. And now, Dr. Moyer's going to move into part two.
Well, if people want to, you guys can stay up because you're going to
Okay.
You guys good with them, or?
Oh, yeah, did you have questions? I'm sorry.
We won't wait to the end. Go ahead.
Okay, I actually had two questions that if you could expand upon.
Okay.
One, formalized acceleration time in grades 1 through 8. And the, what is the integrated service delivery model to help people understand what that means?
So the acceleration time, you've heard us talk about it some at the middle school for 6 through 8, and that really is time for students to receive intervention because that's not currently been a part of the middle school experience, is that daily intensive intervention time. But also, it's a time for our middle school students to have some voice and choice and enrichment opportunities. So that will encompass both ELA and math. At the elementary school at grades 1 through 5, of course, it's going to be a little bit more simplified, and they really this year are going to focus on literacy. So as a grade level, we'll be looking at our grade-level reading data, looking at kids who might need to have an extension because they're already hitting the standards. We will look at kids who need some more personalized intensive support and support their learning through that way. Emerson has also found a way to use time for math in a way that they're increasing their math block and also doing a push-in model with some support so that they can increase the level of math support there. So that's a pilot that they are trying for us to see if that's something we can scale to all the elementary schools. So that was acceleration, and then integrated service delivery model. So, as you know, we added additional instructional coaches who really have an expertise in special education, and the goal of that is to provide environments in our Gen Ed classrooms that are more inclusive for our students with special education needs, making sure that our Gen Ed teachers have the supports to, in the background, to support the needs of the learners, that they become more experienced in how to differentiate and personalize learning, and ensure that our kids with special education needs are getting that exposure to grade-level curriculum, because if they are not getting that exposure, that gap is never going to close. They'll also work with our students who are in a self-contained instructional classroom so that as our students develop and our teachers become more experienced with the grade-level curriculum, we can try and move them along the continuum and get them into those Gen Ed classrooms we'll support.
All right, I'm going to play a little game here. I'm going to go back to the objectives for this evening, and I'm going to pretend that I want to communicate big ideas of district vision and operational plan to the community, but what I'm really doing is trying to understand myself, which is deepening its understanding, which is number one. So, how am I?
Just like the little kid at Hawthorne.
Yeah.
I mean, I notice you swinging your leg.
All right. So, this is what I want to say. Engagement. Could you rattle that, Charlotte? Danielson, pass me again.
So when you are talking about student engagement, you are looking at the level to which students are cognitively, intellectually challenged through rigorous learning.
Okay.
So it could be different for each of you on the board.
Okay. Can we get a plain language version of that to take to the grocery store with us?
Sure. So, it is. It's thinking, how hard do you have to think about the work that you're being asked to do? If I can rattle through an assignment in five minutes and it's all done correctly, I've not engaged, the teacher has not engaged that student. That student didn't have to think, they didn't have to kind of struggle.
Can we stay definitional before we go? Okay. Definitional, engagement. Give me a plain language, engage, definition of engagement to use at the grocery store.
It's intellectually challenging material for kids.
Intellectually challenging material. I'm going to go with that. Three C isn't going to do it.
No.
Intellectually challenging material. Well, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so the second part of the plan is sustainability. Those are the various different components outlined that we discuss in that portion. I'm going to briefly address two, one because it's a little bit new and the other because it's really important. The one that's new is the idea of academic return on investment, and what we really want to do is get onto a rotating schedule, a program analysis with all of our programs, but we want to start this year with the acceleration period at the middle school in particular. But we haven't defined and fleshed that out in terms of, the way you do this is you start with trying to determine criteria or evidence of success. And Mary Ann, who is now here tonight and with us, is going to work with us on developing a system for how we want to approach a regular, ongoing program analysis throughout the district. But the easiest, you wanted the simple definition, you know, of this is what works for which students at what cost. That's the easiest way, in my opinion, to conceptualize the idea of what we're talking about there. And then, the second thing I just want to touch on briefly here is the idea of staffing. In education, it's really where all of your money is, and we do have to be sensitive to scrutinizing the way we staff our buildings and the decisions we make in that regard if we're going to build sustainability into our programming. And the reason we want sustainability in our district is because we want to have the ability and the flexibility to be able to allocate resources where we can best serve students. And the professional development that we need to support teachers and those kinds of things. And so, we need this in order to be able to do what's And so, we need this in order to be able to do what's best for students. And then the third part is the facilities. And the facilities portion is based on focused 205 feedback, the educational alignment study. We've included information in there about the different funding scenario, potential funding scenarios that Elizabeth Hennessy presented to the board in April. And this, again, is something that is clearly going to be, is going to evolve over time. This is one of the biggest things that will likely evolve in the plan over time, depending on the type of feedback we get from the community about what it's willing to support and what it thinks the priority should be. So that, those are the three components of the plan and then, these are the two things that are included in the draft plan that would, that I indicated earlier would be new for the 18, 19 school year. So I'm going to again ask them to get into a little more detail on those.
All right, so I'm going to speak, speak to dual-language immersion and just kind of as a refresher, I know we've talked about it in a couple of different spots, but just to kind of refresh. So dual-language really is going to provide us with two opportunities. The first is a two-way immersion program and our plan for that is for it to be a two-way immersion Spanish program that will begin at Fisher School. Two-way immersion is made up of, half the class is comprised of native Spanish speakers and half the class is comprised of non-native Spanish speakers. So, again, for each group of students, there's a different type of benefit and opportunity. For the non-native Spanish speakers, it's truly an enrichment opportunity. It's an opportunity for them to become bilingual, biliterate, and bicultural by the end of elementary school. But for our native Spanish speakers, it really is going to give them an opportunity to propel them onto a different path for their, for their learning and for their life. So typically, when we have native Spanish speakers and they're receiving second language services, it is with the goal of, the singular goal of developing their English, often at the exclusion of maintaining their Spanish. And typically, they don't even develop their written or their reading skills in Spanish. It's really a singular focus on English. The students become proficient in English, they're able to be successful in academics and in life, but we're really missing out on an opportunity for them. By doing both, by building up their literacy skills in Spanish as well as English, we are then preparing them for really high-level positions. Many kids who go through a dual-language program, by the time they enter their freshman year of high school, they're already able to get the seal of biliteracy and AP credit and pass the AP exam. So at that point, many of them will then start a third language. So we're really developing citizens who are going to be prepared for, for the world as it is now and is going to be continuing. When you start a dual-language program, you begin with one grade level, which would be kindergarten, and then the program expands each year by building up a grade level. Dual-language isn't something you can enter as a third grader. You have to begin at the beginning. You spend the beginning part of your years, your early years, you spend 80% of your day being instructed in Spanish and 20% of your day is taught in English and then you slowly increase that until by fourth and fifth grade, you're being taught 50% of your day in Spanish and 50% in English. Thank you. By the time the kids move on to middle school, they typically have two content areas in Spanish, either social studies and science and half of their English Language Arts. And as I said, my own experiences are when kids hit the end of elementary school, they are fully fluent and biliterate. It's really quite an amazing thing to see. The other avenue we would like to pursue is a one-way immersion program. So, right now, we're considering Mandarin Chinese and so the class would be comprised of all students who are non-native Mandarin Chinese speakers and that, that is a different type of program, but again, you're exiting students who are by, fully bilingual and bilateral and bicultural. For that, we will tap into districts around us who've had great success with those programs, which would be Schaumburg District 54, Barrington District 220. Jen Barnaby, who is our new principal at Lincoln Elementary School, actually started a one-way immersion program in her building. So, we have a lot of expertise to tap into for that.
The second curriculum program we're looking to launch next year in our middle school level is Project Lead the Way. You know, as a future-rate school district, we need to make sure our programs and curriculum are, are going to be preparing our students for a 21st century job market and as Dr. Moyer mentioned earlier, many of those jobs have not been defined yet that our students are going to be facing between now and the time that they retire. A STEM focus is going to help prepare them, especially in terms of technology, to engage in problem-solving and that was definitely a goal of the middle school task force, something that came out of their research. Project Lead the Way is a comprehensive STEM curriculum enhancing the science, career, and tech and computer skills of our students. Now, the program is very well-known for being a pre-engineering program and that certainly is their biggest and most well-developed program. However, they do have also programs in biomedical engineering and in computer science. The middle school level has 10 different units you can choose from. Design and modeling is the launch of the curriculum, as is computer science for innovators and makers. However, there are courses in robotics, architecture, energy in the environment, and more. We'll be looking for ways to integrate this curriculum into a high school level as well. At the high school level, those three pathways become very clearly defined and the research projects get more and more in-depth as time goes on. The culminating courses or the capstone courses in the Project Lead the Way curriculum, you're pointing to a mountain and you're telling the kids to climb it, but you don't tell them how and they need to, they get to figure that out and challenge themselves to solve real-world problems. Costs of the program can be integrated into our normal teaching and learning budget when it comes to curriculum development, but we are also hoping to get some grants for that. And it's our intention also to prepare students for these experiences in the upper grades by continuing to develop and expand the use of our maker spaces at the primary grades, making sure that that creative fire stays alive, that they learn to question, observe, experiment, and then network with one another to explain their results and talk about the things that they've discovered as a key to problem-solving.
Did you need them?
So just a question about the dual-language and if you covered it, maybe I missed it, but what does that look like when they get to middle school?
So when they get to middle school, typically, two classes are in the target language, so in this case, Spanish. So often, it's their social studies, perhaps, science, and then half of their English Language Arts block is in the target language and their other classes are in English.
Okay, so in wrapping this up, the, the plan is based on, the draft plan is based on an assessment of our existing practices and community input. And we are calling this an operational plan intentionally. We're trying not to call it a traditional strategic plan. What you would typically see in a traditional strategic plan of old would be like a five-year plan and we think that that is, is too long a period of time in terms of responding to today's conditions, both in terms of unforeseen things that could happen at the state or federal level, as well as changing job market, student needs, demographics, all those kinds of things that we deal with. So, so we didn't want something where you generate a lot of buzz and you create it and then nobody knows what's in it and then it ends later and you try to verify that you did everything that nobody knew they were supposed to be doing. We want this to be a living, breathing document that's meaningful to teachers at the classroom level. So we're kind of considering this a roadmap for planning that would guide professional development or resource allocation decisions, so there's some fluidity and flexibility built into this. What we would like to do is present and revise it annually so that we always have essentially a three-year plan in place. There's always that, that guidance document in place. It doesn't start and end. Our work doesn't really end. You know, it's, so, and then, you know, with the student achievement being the overarching priority with the three interrelated components working together to support that, there are minimal cost implications. The startup costs for Project Lead the Way are things that through our planning, through our own budgeting, through some potential startup grants, all of those kinds of things, it would be phased in over a period of time. It'd be very manageable. So there are some cost implications, but they're minimal. And also, and everything else we talked about is essentially cost-neutral. We have the facilities for Project Lead the Way. If we were to move toward all-day kindergarten, we have some ideas of how that could be a budget-neutral program as well, but the facility, the facility concerns would have to be taken into account and that's where we would have to build that into the planning. So we will continue, as we shared, to solicit additional community input over time. We have included in the packet tonight, kind of an abstract of the big ideas in the draft and we are looking to obtain the services of a communications expert to help develop strategies to communicate these ideas over a period of time and, and get additional input in a way that, that will truly be able to be impactful in terms of making sure that we are reflecting what the community is saying. And ultimately, we'll turn all of these things into some type of a plan-on-a-page-type concept. And so the goal would be to communicate these ideas differently to different audiences depending on the user needs. But those things are things that we, you know, since this is still in development, an official plan on the page or whatever isn't, isn't really in place at this point, but ultimately, when the final plan is, is really ready and we're comfortable, whatever point in time that might be, later in the fall perhaps, we would have all those different types of things in place to try to ensure that we have something that can be on the webpage, utilized in social media, easily accessible to parents, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, well, so then, we go back to our summary. So our summary is taking us back, John, to the four objectives. So if we ask ourselves, did we meet those? The first one, deepen understanding of future-ready learning. So we have our vision, all students engaged, college, career, and life-ready graduates based on the six Cs. Beliefs and practices, we have our four belief statements, we have our three pillars, and we have a focus on capacity building and leadership development. Our immediate student achievement priorities to accelerate learning for all students. We talked about balanced assessment and student engagement. We talked about looking for project, dual-language and Project Lead the Way for 2018-19. The fourth one, I'm not sure if I can answer that. That, I don't know if that's mine to say, but we certainly hope that we helped and we certainly want to continue to answer questions over time and make sure that you're able to do that when you get those grocery store conversations, so.
Questions or comments from the board? Thank you for putting this together. It's very helpful.
Okay.
Oh, Karen?
Yes.
Well, I think we should say it. I know we said at the retreat when we had the presentation, but, you know, we've been asking for something like this for a number of years, pre-U and it's nice to have it encapsulated here, presented to us, presented to the community about what you've been trying to achieve as soon as you got here. And this is a great vehicle to say what, what it all encompasses, all in one place. And then, it allows the vehicle for everyone, for you, for example, or the administration or the building principals or the teacher leaders in various different forums that we have, to be able to reference this and be able to say, this is the new initiative or this is what, you know, this is what we're, we're doing this year, this is why, this is how it links to our overall vision. You know, this is where we are in the progression of moving it forward and implementation. So it's, you know, thank you for putting this together and having it be one full picture that we can then take pieces, depending on who our audience is, you know, what level they are in the understanding of where we are, what they need to know their role in helping us be successful because this is what the community has asked for, is for, you know, to be the, you know, you know, national leader, you know, they want the return on their education tax dollars and this is how we're doing it for them.
Anything else? Okay, thanks. We'll move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. Are there any items board members would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Oh, we need a motion. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through D. I'm sorry, A through E.
Is there a second?
A second?
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Go ahead. Mr. McDonough?
Yep.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Superintendent's action items.
Okay, there's two. One, the first one, the DePage Area Occupational Education System Board of Directors. What that is, is that is a cooperative that we belong to and that has some programs that we don't offer. It's kind of like a technology center. They have, we have different students that participate there and I don't know about 15 high school students a year, I think it is, or something like that. And we have to have a representative on that board. Last year, it was Dave Beatty. This year, we think that Dr. Cohen is the appropriate person and so we're just asking you to, to approve the ability for him to attend more meetings.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Dr. Mark Cohen, Assistant Superintendent of Innovation and Growth, to serve as its representative to the DePage Area Occupational Educational System Board of Directors for the 2017-2018 school year.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, moved by Margaret, seconded by Karen. Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforio?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. It's seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Next item. Go ahead.
So the second item, we presented to you the proposed student achievement objectives for 2017-18 and before we were as far along in the planning process, we developed those to try to organize our work into some big ideas that would guide the professional development and resource allocation decisions and provide some focus for the district at the board table and in its curriculum work and assessment development, et cetera. And so, Mary and Mark presented those tonight. We're not asking you to approve the draft plan, which is still in development, but we are asking you to approve the student achievement objectives so that we can continue with our curriculum development work, which, you know, requires resources and those types of recommendations that will come back to you in the spring about any curriculum revisions, et cetera. We would just like the board to be able to... We would just like the board to be able to sanction the fact that these should be the priorities of the district's instructional program for the 2017-18 school year.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2017-2018 student achievement objectives as presented.
A second?
Moved by John, second by Margaret. Is there discussion? Go ahead.
I brought this up the other night, Dave, and you responded in the weekly update about how there was a lot of specificity in these things that are attached. And I don't want to say that these aren't important to us, but I also wanted to say that approval is an act of commitment. And I think as you start at the top and then move from the columns left to right, you know, you start with a lot of commitment of the board and less so as you move through. And so, I want to approve these things. I definitely do, because we feel like this is the right track. This is exactly where it is. But at the same time, recognizing that our commitment to, well, let's say that we're Dr. Baum, Dr. Henderson's name appears, we're very committed, don't misunderstand me, but our commitment reduces as you go from left to right, knowing that you've got the flexibility of altering these things called results. We talked about that, they're really actions. We went through that last week or a couple of weeks ago. But the idea that you have the flexibility to change these things to reach these more fundamental things as we move to the left. And so, I approve that, just with that understanding that there's the flexibility in this to change things more as you go to the right, knowing that we will always be updated by you. So, I want to thank you for allowing me that explanation of how I'm getting my arms around it. By the way, I wasn't satisfied totally with your definition of student engagement and found that there's definitions all over the place, and they're all great, too. Don't get me wrong here. There's attention, curiosity, interest, optimism, passion, meaningful student involvement, intellectually active in learning important and challenging content. And then, Mr. Bloom gave me this one, creating productive struggle. These are all things, and they kind of describe this thing that we have an intuitive sense about, but I think what would be really nice to help us with our grocery store conversations is to come together on a certain formula that kind of captures it. And so, maybe if you could help us get that sort of grocery store tagline to get out there, does it fit on that? Because it really is important, and I think it is fundamental to our kids owning their own education when they're engaged. And so, totally support the concept, but like the Supreme Court sometimes has trouble with definitions, I've been struggling with this one, so.
So, can I, can I ask you this then, just to make sure I understand what you're asking? So, we gave, we gave a standard definition of how we're trying to conceptualize innovation. We talk about, we talked about rigor as a combination of higher-level thinking and real-world applications. So, if, so do you want us to come up with something like that? That's just, that, that, that's what you're asking?
Yeah, it would really help with our mission, which is to go out there and tell the public about it.
Yeah, we can do that. We can certainly do that.
Thank you. On a T-shirt.
Other comments? Hearing done, we'll do a voice vote for the approval of the student achievement objectives. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion passes.
So, the only thing under superintendent's communication, two FOIA requests, Freedom of Information Act requests were received, one requesting specific student data, which was granted, one requesting specific contract information, which was granted.
Brings us to board communications. Any updates from the board? We have three upcoming meetings, Tuesday, August 8th, Board of Education meeting, 7:30 PM, Tuesday, August 22nd, Board of Education meeting, 7:30 PM, and Tuesday, September 12th, Board of Education meeting, 7:30 PM. That brings us to the end of our meeting. I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks.